Available, um, we have four members of the commission here. Les is no, I'm not at the meeting. And Tyce uh is not at the meeting as well. So we have four of you um on the agenda which um Maggie's kind of got pulled up on the screen if you can see it.
Yeah.
First thing is call the meeting to order and then we gotta approve the agenda. Then we gotta vote for the vice chair and chair for the two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. Okay, um, let's call the meeting to order. Um. Can I have a approval for the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Um, approval for the agenda, all in favor say aye.
We gotta call out the vote individually since it's hard to know who's saying what.
Oh, okay. Okay, so who for, who, who uh made the motion?
Dawn.
Oh.
Okay, and who's second?
Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, aye for myself. There anybody who opposes? Okay, approval for the agenda has been approved. Okay, number three.
So, yeah, this is John again. So what we need now is a motion and a second to elect the chair and a motion and a second to elect the vice chair. So you can uh elect people who are not here um at the meeting or yourself or whoever, so.
Yeah, and John, I'm just gonna jump in quickly. Um, so Dawn and Patty, um, I just notified them this week that their terms are done in February. Um, I did.
Oh.
Um, they are able to reapply um for their seats if they would like to, but just keeping that in mind that we do. That come up too.
Okay, yeah, um, I know I just got that information too, and I haven't really thought much. I've been seriously swamped, but um. With Tom not here, um, and Dawn, are you planning on um reapplying or you're still thinking about it?
No, I wasn't planning on it. Uh, I turned seventy next month, so I, I thought maybe it's time to turn the reins over to somebody else. Let somebody else have all this fun.
Maggie, was there anybody um that was interested that you know of besides? Um.
Um, yeah, so I, the, the um opening is, will be until, I believe, the fourteenth or fifteenth. So um I have yet to, yeah, I need to think this through with John a little bit, cause like the timing of this is not ideal, like when, when um terms expire, especially when we're setting um elections for.
With COVID.
Yeah, well, just, we've always like, first, we've always did appointments in January, but the, it's kind of hard because our terms, um, and like your guys' terms end in February, so it just makes things a little tricky. Um, so maybe I'll, I'll work on cleaning that up for next year.
Okay.
Or John, do you think we should just, should we wait to do the election until February?
Um.
Or what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we could, uh, you know, it's, you're talking about the election of the vice chair and chair?
Yeah.
I, I guess we could do that, um, cause what, will we have members by February though, or?
Yeah, we will.
I mean, I know Tom has been chair for years and Les has been vice chair, but last year, I think Patty, you got elected vice chair because you were missing at that meeting.
Yes.
Um, it's possible to reelect those guys, um, and just move it that way.
Yeah, or you could work, you could use, yeah, you could use who you currently already have, so. I mean, we, it, yeah, typically you wouldn't likely elect a new person anyway, so.
Yeah, that was my thought too.
Aye.
We can vote for some absentees.
Hmm. Okay, um, so open for any other discussion? Okay, um, so, go ahead.
So somebody would just need to make a motion and a second for those positions if they want to.
Okay. So I'm thinking, um, I most likely will reapply, so um unless somebody else wants that vice position, you can have it. Otherwise, I guess we can move forward with the same, Tom and I.
Can we, can we move to a, a vote on both at once? Or they separate?
Uh, if you make a motion for a chair and a vice chair, yes, you could make that vote at the same time.
All, all move to reelect Thomas chair and Patty as vice chair.
Thank you. Um, oh, uh, is there a second on that?
I can second.
Okay, so that was Sarah?
Yep.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, so I guess we'll approve um to have the vice as Tom, Patty as the vice chair and I guess that's it. Approved. Um, okay, so now the election too. Um, do we need to kind of put that off or?
As, no, that was the, that was the motion for the chair and vice chair. There has to be the item for you to reapply and new members come in February. The next item on the agenda would be to approve the minutes from the December meeting.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from December first, two thousand twenty meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Dawn, motion, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from December first. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, approval for the minutes from December first is approved. Uh, moving to number five, the Coldwater Crossing Eighth Edition Final Plat, Final Plans Unit Development Plan and Street Vacation Park Point. John, do you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I do. So this was a uh application that came before the city approximately two years ago, a little over two years ago, actually. Um, it was the Plymouth Platte for Coldwater Crossing Eighth Edition. And um at that point, they, the Plymouth Platte was approved along with the Plymouth Plan Unit Development. And uh the Final Platte and Final Plan Unit Development was uh submitted for a, a Final Platte as well. And it moved forward and never, uh, kind of stalled out for a while. Um, the applicant had requested to extend the application and extend the Plymouth Platte approval. And right now that approval is good through April first of twenty twenty-one, so this year. And over the winter here, the last couple of months, I've been talking with uh Dan Schmidt from the um engineering company, Saether Berquist, that's doing the work for the development, and they are moving this Final Platte, Final Plan Unit Development Plan, and along with that, a, a right-of-way vacation forward. Um, the same application that was submitted approximately two years ago. So with that being said, the, the Final Platte itself is not changed uh from a number of lots or anything like that, but there is some changes in the grading work and the, the engineering of it. And I know Bolden Make has reviewed that, and I'll talk about that here in a second. Uh, the Plymouth Platte itself, that was approved, uh, was good for ninety-six single-family lots. And Eighth Edition Final Platte is thirty-two of those ninety-six lots, so there will be additional phases from that Plymouth Platte that can move forward in the future. The uh Plymouth Platte, uh, if I remember right, is good through September tenth, I think, two thousand twenty-three. So they have a couple more years here, about two and a half, three years almost, to move forward with the remaining phases after the Eighth Edition. And um Maggie's got up the Plymouth Platte drawing right now, and if you look at that drawing and look at the streets, the streets that are gray in area, that's the area of the Eighth Edition Final Platte. The other areas where the streets are not gray would be future phases that were previously approved through the Plymouth Platte that could be platted in the future. Um, the Platte itself uh does match the Plymouth Platte. And the plant, the reason for the Plan Unit Development was, uh, if everyone knows, this project was graded out uh years ago. And the Plymouth Platte, the original one from like seventeen years ago, I think it was, that expired. So when they came back, they did the Seventh Edition, they had to do a Plan Unit Development with that one. And the reason for that was, over the time when this Platte was originally approved way back when, uh, the zoning district changed from a lot standpoint, from the, the width and the size. So what was graded out there doesn't match the current zoning. So as these developments, this one and the Hidden Creek Development have been doing new phases, we've been doing the Plan Unit Development to reduce the minimum lot width down to seventy-five feet and ten thousand square feet, um, from what the current zoning is, is eighty-five feet, ten thousand square feet. So, and along with this, there's some right-of-way width um reductions that have been approved that matches the existing streets as well. So that's the need, the need for the Plan Unit Development, and as part of this, that will be approval with the Final Platte. Um, as you can see, the Riverbend Trail, uh, basically, there's an extension of an old schoolhouse road that passes, I don't know, three, four lots and a dead end. That road, Riverbend Trail, will be extended west and curved back onto Coldwater Crossing. And there'll be three sub-streets that extend, one to the west, one kind of the northeast, uh, west, and one to the northeast. On the Plymouth Platte, you see it says Seventh Street, uh, Seventh Street Northwest. Um, that name was actually changed on the Final Platte to um, uh, I think it was Crow Wing Trail. Uh, the one going to the northwest is Timber Drive, and the one to the west is Hickory Lane. Uh, the one, the uh Hickory Lane and Timber Drive are fine, but we do need to change the Crow River Trail back to Seventh Street Northwest, cause that road will eventually extend northeast and connect in with the existing Seventh Street up in uh, that's existing there in the current city right now. So when that road connection is made, we'd like to keep that road name contiguous, um, like it was on the Plymouth Platte. So that was one of the conditions of approval. Uh, the, the project itself, as I mentioned, with the Plan Unit Development, needs to meet all the R-one low-density requirements, except for the lot width will be reduced to seventy-five feet. So all of the um lots meet that requirement. Uh, basically, you know, with the Plan Unit Development, um, it allows us to do that. And like I said, once again, it really makes sense, cause the land is graded out there. I know a little bit of regrain has to be done since it's been such a long time, but uh does fit in with the rest of the neighborhood and space of the same thing that's been done in Hidden Creek and Coldwater Crossing. Uh, the density for the entire Coldwater Crossing Eighth Edition, uh, which excludes Outlot D, which is a future outlot area, um, came in at one point nine five acres, and all this includes the entire Plymouth Platte, so just under two acres, uh, two units an acre, which is pretty standard for a single-family development. Um, we haven't received any comments at this time that I'm aware of, other than Les Han, who's a member of the Planning Commission, called me this afternoon and discussed it a little bit, just since he was gonna be here. His only thing he brought up was that Seventh Street connection. Uh, one thing he wanted to make a comment on is, he thinks in the next phase after this Eighth Edition, that that Seventh Street connection should be made because we have so much traffic. Um, as we keep adding phases, there's only the two access points out onto County Road Thirty, that this third access point to the northeast is something that's probably gonna be needed here in the near future. And he'd like to see that being part of a Ninth Edition Final Platte, whatever that would come be. And that would be the extension of Seventh Street up to the northeast. Um, I don't know how many lots are there approximately, but that's, whatever the phase is, Les, that's what he'd like to see that. Um, as far as parkland dedication goes, um, in the initial development, I think it was the initial six phases, all the parkland dedication was satisfied for the entire Coldwater Crossing project. Um, they had paid on a per-acre basis, I believe, at the time, and they kind of prepaid, so there is no park dedication being required um with this phase of Coldwater Crossing. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the right-of-way width for all the streets is gonna be fifty feet, except for the Seventh Street Northwest is gonna be a sixty-foot right-of-way. And the reasoning for that is, is that road is classified long-term um in the city's transportation plan as a minor collector. Uh, normally, that minor collector would be seventy feet in width, but due to the Plan Unit Development, it was agreed that this could be sixty to kind of match what was previously left there. Uh, the street vacation that's been mentioned, uh, actually requires a public hearing. And that public hearing for a street vacation, just like an easement vacation, goes before the city council. Um, the city council then would hear that at the meeting when they would look at the Final Platte and Final Plan Unit Development Plan. And if you notice, um, on the very, um, and Maggie, I don't know if you can scroll up to a different page, I can maybe uh uh explain where that is, but there was previously, there it is, that'll show up, there's a, uh, on the end of Schoolhouse Drive, there's a little knob there. And that was where a future cul-de-sac was supposed to go, since that cul-de-sac is not gonna be designed that way anymore. That little knob has to be vacated, and that will become part of a lot. And the new right, road right-of-way for Seventh will be uh accessed further to the west on that road. So the street vacation works, and the vacation would be contingent upon Final Platte approval and all that. So that makes sense, it fits with the plan with the new design to give Seventh Street access out there. Um, there's also an easement on the north boundary of the Platte. And it doesn't show on the Final Platte right now, and I haven't seen the title work from the uh applicant yet. Um, but what uh needs to happen is that easement's gonna either need to be vacated, um, eventually, long-term, it will need to be vacated. It was an access easement to the property to the north that's in the township, which is also owned by the owner, who is Jude Legu. And I should let, I'll just let everyone know, I kind of forgot to mention this. Um, Jude Legu was the owner and developer of the Seventh Edition. Uh, he has now turned uh this application over um to uh, I believe it's the Loomis Development, and Scott Loomis, I believe, is on here as well. And he would be doing the building out there. I think he's currently building some of the houses in the Seventh Edition, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I'm not sure if it's just Eighth, excuse me, the Eighth Edition or all the future phases of the Eighth Edition Plymouth Platte. Um, but we need to get this fa, uh, verified, and then verify what the status of that easement is, because it needs to be shown on the Final Platte. And if it's no longer needed for access, because Jude does own all that property in the north, uh, possibly, he could vacate that, and that would go away. Um, landscaping, under the PUD, at a minimum, the landscaping needs to follow the standard requirements. And the standard requirements would be two uh uh trees uh in the front yards uh of all the lots. On corner lots, you'd have two front yard trees and two side yard trees. And since it's a single-family development, and there's really nothing we need to screen out here from a, a bumper standpoint, um, we're fine with the standard landscaping, um, through the Plan Unit Development, which would be the two trees for a lot or for, for corner lot. Uh, there is gonna be sidewalks and trails in the Coldwater Crossing development. In this phase, no trails will be constructed, but there will be sidewalks constructed. Um, this includes the sidewalk on the west side of Seventh Street, uh, the west side of Timber Drive, and the north side of Hickory Lane. Uh, there'll also be sidewalk on Riverbend Trail. And this will extend on the north side and extend all the way down to Schoolhouse Road. Uh, currently, there's one lot on the corner of Riverbend Trail and Schoolhouse Road uh that does not have sidewalks, so it'll need to be extended through that yard and connect with the sidewalk or trail system on Schoolhouse Road. And that would make a connection all the way from Schoolhouse Road, all the way through back to Coldwater Crossing. So that will be part of the development. Um, water and sewer will service every one of these lots out here. I know Bolden Make has looked at that. Uh, I also know Coldwater Crossing did have some outstanding wetland items that need to be resolved. Um, one of the conditions um of approval with the Seventh Edition was that a full delineation was done. That delineation has been done. There are no wetlands to be impacted or messed with in the Eighth Edition, but there would be a potential future addition, so there's really no major wetland stuff to deal with as part of this Final Platte. But as we do future phases of the Coldwater Crossing, uh, there may be some wetland things that need to be resolved and some exemptions put in place. Uh, there is also no floodplain located in this Eighth Edition, but there is floodplain lur, uh, located in future phases of Coldwater Crossing um in some of the outlot areas, but since there's none in this phase, we don't need to worry about that. Um, I know the uh city engineer was looking at that, and there might have been some up in the potting area. So whatever's needed with the floodplain will have to be resolved between the city engineer and the applicant. Um, and I know that's been discussed and looked at. There's also no shoreline overlay in here. I don't believe there's any monument signage being proposed, but if any signage was put out there, it'd have to meet the sign ordinance requirement. Uh, the city engineer, as I mentioned, did uh send comments on December twenty-ninth for the Eighth Edition. Uh, there was eighteen comments that were addressed, and those comments will need to be um dealt with uh prior to Final Platte approval at the council. Um, so as we move this forward, you would make a recommendation to the council. One of the recommendations or conditions would be that the engineering comments are resolved. Uh, they also have not planned for any uh association. I'm not aware of any covenants that'll be proposed. And mailboxes need to be in the cluster unit design per the post office, so that would have to be reviewed for locations there between the applicant and the post office. So we have three items of uh recommendations tonight. One is the Final PUD Plan. One is the Right-of-Way, Right-of-Way Vacation, and the third one is the Final Platte. So the Final PUD Plan was recommended with six conditions. One was the engineering comments are resolved. Two is the Platte contingency, meaning the Final uh Plan Unit Development Plan is continued upon the Final Platte. Uh, the Final Plan Unit Development Phasing is good through um a period of five years, so uh September tenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the development agreement will need to be addressed uh prior to final approval at the council, and that'll have to be put in place. I know that's in the process right now with the city attorney. Uh, lot sizes have to meet the R-one standards, other than the lot width. And right-of-way is uh gonna be the fifty feet on the streets I mentioned and sixty on the Seventh Street Northwest. Uh, Right-of-Way Vacation is contingent upon any engineer's comments and Final Platte approval. And then the Final Platte itself is contingent upon uh twenty-four conditions. Um, and those conditions are the engineering comments, the park dedication, that there is none. The street name of uh River, Crow River Trail changed to Seventh Street Northwest. That the sidewalks are constructed per the plan, that there's no trails being constructed. Uh, the Park Point Street Vacation is approved. Uh, any wetland impact, you'd have to go through the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act. Uh, natural area signage shall be placed on lots two and three block one in Coldwater Crossing. Um, a no-lot exemption uh will be needed to construct any stormwater ponds that were previously wetlands, if that is the case in this phase. Uh, any Army, Army Corps approval will be needed as well, dealing with any wetland impacts. Uh, Carver County Water Management Organization needs to be satisfied. They also do your stormwater management, so that would need to be addressed. Uh, future street extension signs will be at the end of the dead-end roads, there's three of them. Uh, they would basically say future street extension, so people know that that street will extend at some point in time. And when they are, those signs will just be removed at that point. Uh, floodplain boundaries are shown, they need to be addressed, and if any uh impact to them, either letter of map amendments with FEMA will have to be addressed. Uh, mailbox clustering uh needs to be submitted for review. A streetlight plan needs to be verified and submitted. Uh, any signage needs to go and meet the sign ornaments. Outlot dedication, um. One item I noticed here is Outlot A and B in the Seventh Edition was supposed to be deeded to the city. They were not deeded. So with this uh approval, we would get the Outlot A and B in Coldwater Crossing Seventh Edition, along with Outlot A um in Coldwater Eighth Edition. And uh Outlot A had asked that the uh surveyor switch Outlot A and B, since Outlot, the large outlot was not labeled on the Final Platte. So that'd be condition seventeen. Uh, easement vacation is also needed. Um, that's the one we talked about, North Property Line. Uh, stormwater pond access uh needs to be maintained by the city, so access will have to be provided in the form of an outlot or an easement. Um, construction traffic access routes, uh, as part of the Final Platte, uh, we need, you know, existing phases of Coldwater. We need to make sure we're not just driving through the existing neighborhood with construction traffic, cause this is on the very north end, and that's where that Seventh Street access will become important in future phases. Uh, that the landscaping is the, to match those trees we talked about earlier. Once again, we need a development contract in place uh before the city council approves the Final Platte. Uh, Final Platte phasing uh be a multi-phase Platte, and then building permit uh will not be issued on any lot until uh the Final Platte are officially recorded. So with that, there's three action items. Uh, if you got any questions, we can take that. I do know Scott Loomis was on the call as well. And I will say, if you wanna make a motion, you could potentially make a motion to approve all three items at once versus three separate motions. Um, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Well, I have, it's Patty, I have a question about um that future Outlot B. Um, does, how many plots would be able to fit there, and would they have enough setbacks for that?
How many what would be able to fit there?
Plats would be available for that area. I mean, it just, to me, it just kind of looked like it's um too close to other structures, other.
Well, I, I guess, I, Maggie, can you go up to that uh Plymouth Platte map? There, that one right there. So can everyone see the map that's on the screen right now?
Yeah, yeah.
So are you asking how many more lots can be planted in the remaining Outlot B area, or the?
Yes.
If you look, those future roadways are all Plymouth Platted, and those could all be future lots in future phases.
Uh-huh.
So like, it says, I think it says Road One, Road Five, Road Six, Road Four, and then that Seventh Street, those are all future lots.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, so sixty-four additional lots could be platted based on the current Plymouth Platte approval.
Okay. And did you say that that had to be switched uh with A, like the names for uh switching?
Yeah, so on the uh Final Platte itself, when you're looking at a Plymouth Platte, they would label the two outlots. One outlot would be for the pond, and that would be kind of on the south side of Riverbend Trail. The other outlot would be the large outlot for all the future development. And the old, the large outlot was not labeled on the Final Platte, but the small one for the pond that would be deeded to the city would be outlabeled Outlot B. And I requested that they switch that, the small lot is A, and the future outlot for the future development is B. That way, when we have A, um, someday, you know, if the state currently B, the pond, that, somebody could say, well, where's Outlot B A from the Eighth Edition? Well, that got replatted. So we'll, we'll switch the outlot names, which isn't a big deal, cause one wasn't even labeled. And then we would just get, as a city, Outlot A, and the big lot, lot would be Outlot B, which the developer would retain for future development.
All right, so, and then those three would be the Final PUD, the, the Right-of-Way, and the Final Platte, right? Those are the three?
That would be correct. Those are the three action items.
Okay. Um, so is there any other discussion or any questions for John? Any, anything at all? All right, I see. So Final PUD Plan, the Right-of-Way Vacation, and the Final Platte. So if there's no further discussion, I'm wondering if somebody would like to make a motion to approve all three of those.
I'll make a motion to approve all three of those, the um Final PUD Plan, or Right-of-Way Vacation, and the Final Platte.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who's that, Summerfield?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve and a second for all three, the Final PUD, the Right-of-Way Vacation, and the Final Platte. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say aye. Okay, we're going to um.
And, and Patty, before we move on, I'd like to say this will have to go to the city council. Um, it will not be at the meeting next week, cause we still have to finalize the development agreement. And I did get an email from Dan Schmidt over the holidays, saying there were some revisions to the plans that had to be made, some minor stuff. Um, so we gotta get all that in place, or I'm probably looking at uh the meeting in February. This will go before the city council.
Okay. So um we'll move to approve and to have the city council review. Okay, um, moving on to number six, the next meeting is going to be February second. Um, question, Maggie, so um you'll be, did, did you happen to send me the application, or um when do I need to have something like that in?
Yep, I um emailed it to you, I believe, yesterday, with the application. Um, I do need it back by, I think, the fourteenth.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Okay, next meeting will be Tuesday, February second. Um, and then, can we have a commissioner's report?
I don't have any.
Okay, anybody else? Sarah?
Nope, don't have anything.
Hey, Dawn, anything?
No.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is John. Uh, I do have one item, the Bankmire property, which is east of Shimcore Industrial Park. Yeah, this is John, uh I do have one item, the Bank Meyer property, which is east of Shimcore Industrial Park out there. Um, I've had contact from a a possible developer on that right before the holidays. They said they're going to get back in touch with me after the holidays here in early January, I have not heard from them yet. But they did have some discussion about trying to move something forward on that possibly this year as well. So I know we've had discussions in the past and nothing's really happened, but um they did contact me here recently.
Okay.
And then I just have one thing, okay, this is Maggie. Um, so if Don is not reapplying, I just wanted to thank him for being his last meeting on the planning commission. So thanks for all your dedication and work, Don.
Well, thanks for putting up, thanks for putting up with me all these years.
I've spoken with you, Don.
Thank you.
I have a question, um anything on that coffee house?
The site plan approval, I believe, was approved at the city council. Uh, Maggie, do you know what the status of the um uh set rebuilding permit, I know you had asked about that a week or so ago.
Um, I don't, I will double check on that tomorrow when I'm in the office.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if it came back yet, usually Janelle will receive the plans back and she'll notify them, but I just, I. Um, I'll double check with her if the plans came back from the uh. Building inspector and if she called him to pick it up, so I I can send out an email to the planning commission tomorrow with an update.
Okay. Any other reporting or questions? Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll make that my last motion.
Great. We have a second to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion made to adjourn and second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, everybody. Thank you, sorry I was late, I glad you reached out to me.
Me too.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Hi.